Okay, all this meeting of the town planning board is ordered. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, April fourth, two thousand twenty four. Do you have any comments or revisions? I'm I'm used. Page five.
Sorry, Lee.
Very first line is page five of the project. The last paragraph before the vote, this is where it comes in. Discuss the twelve month operation period after taking was it twelve months or was it twelve to twenty four? Do you recall?
I think we'll say information.
I think any information that kind of left it is your work. Not consistent by seeing these how it was discussed.
I don't know.
There's any voting on the board. It does have to be now, but if it was twelve temporal, it was changing.
Just that that way. And then I'll probably check over again.
Got a motion to hold off on review of the April fourth meeting minutes. I don't need a motion.
Just table.
I like motions.
Okay, motion, great. I love motions, more motions.
No motion, okay. Overruled. Move on to the April eighteenth, two thousand twenty four, and May second, two thousand twenty four minutes, which we do not have at this time, so we'll table those to a future meeting. Move on to possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. First one is RDM Goshen seventeen M, otherwise known as twenty six oh two Route seventeen developers. We have correspondence dated May seventh, two thousand twenty four, from the attorneys, Whitman, Osterman, and Hatta. Dear Chairman and members of the planning board, on behalf of twenty six oh two Developers LLC, an affiliated RDM group, RDM the applicant, and the owner and property located at the above captioned project site, we submit this extension request related to the planning board's site plan and special use permit to construct a three hundred thousand square foot warehouse on the project site. The planning board issued its approvals for the project on December twentieth, two thousand twenty two. In June of twenty three, the planning board grants an extension of time for RDM to satisfy the conditions of the approval and to get subdivision plot signed by the planning board chairman. Then at its November twenty, two thousand twenty three meeting, the planning board granted another extension for the approvals until June sixth, two thousand twenty four. Pursuant to zoning code ninety seven dash seventy eight E one, a site plan approval shall expire if the applicant fails to obtain the necessary building permits or fails to comply with the conditions of the site plan approval within eighteen months of its issuance or if the special permit for which is associated expires. Here, the site plan approvals are valid until June sixth, two thousand twenty four, considering that is eighteen months from the date the approvals were adopted. Per zoning code ninety seven dash seventy eight E one, the planning board may grant one time six month extension. As such, RDM hereby requests a six month extension of the approvals until December sixth, two thousand twenty four, to allow time for the planning board chairman to sign approved site plans and seek a building permit. Pursuant to zoning code section, is it section or subsection? Section, okay. Ninety seven dash seventy two H one, a special permit shall expire if the applicant fails to obtain the necessary building permits or fails to comply with the conditions of the special permit within twelve months of its issuance, or if its time limit expires without renewal. As noted above, the special use permit for the project is extended until June sixth, two thousand twenty four. We hereby seek what? We would have. Another six month extension of the project's special use permit until December sixth, two thousand twenty four, to allow time for the planning board chairman to sign the approved site plans and seek a building permit. To update the planning board on the project's status, please note the RDM's project engineer has been working to obtain all outside agency approvals of New York State D E C, D O T, Orange County Department of Health. Related to outside agency approvals, please note the following regarding the D O T. RDM has received conceptual approval dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty four. RDM will work with the town to enter into a developers agreement to set forth the project's fair share of land and to set forth a timeframe for the traffic improvements prior to the issuance of the building permit in accordance with the approvals. From the New York State D E C, RDM and its consulting team is working to respond to comments received from the D E C related to permitting for the proposed septic system. And from the Orange County Department of Health, RDM and its consulting team are currently finalizing the water treatment design for submission to the Orange County Department of Health. In addition to the above, the RDM has revised the project's site plans for consistency with all approval conditions and has submitted the same to the town engineer. In addition, RDM has provided the town board with the cost estimates for the required bonding as well as proposed stormwater facility maintenance agreement, which is expected to be approved by the town board at its May ninth, two thousand twenty four meeting. And it was adopted by the town board May ninth, as per the town clerk. In coming weeks, RDM expects to submit the final site plan for review and signature by the planning board chairman. Be requested placed on your next available agenda to consider the requested extension. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. And very truly yours, Charles Gottlieb, attorney. Sean, do we have anything to add to that?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. So in the court of justice, it indicated that the plans have been submitted. I had reviewed the script and the site plans, and they are ready for your signature upon the application of the other conditions. Also, the applicant architect is in the audience, I don't know if he wants to say anything.
You don't have.
You don't need to if you don't have anything to add.
No, no, I think Charlie summarized it pretty well, so.
Quite summary.
If there are any questions, I'm happy to speak to them.
And I continue, I have been working towards completion of the legal documents that I received tonight.
Okay, comments from the board?
Just a question. They they received their variance, I believe, does that matter? Or was the variance elapsed already?
I don't know when they received it.
I don't know, I don't, it's off my head, I don't know. But they got it obviously before we gave the approval for site plan.
Yeah, so usually it's valid for about one year unless there's other terms or sunset provision or not. And a lot of times it's conditioned on, you know, within this time period after planning board approval, if that's needed. I don't know how it was written, but the applicant has clearly not abandoned it and has been following it, so in that instance, I would defer to the zoning board attorney, but.
I believe they might have refiled for an extension.
Other comments from the board? So we're looking forward December, uh, what was it, December sixth, two thousand twenty four, six month extension, could I have motion?
Still move.
Phil, second line. Seamus, all in favor, say aye. Against?
I know I can't be, but I'm against.
Oh, okay.
Because when they pushed us through this thing a year and a half ago, they had a rush and haven't even broken ground yet. And now they're they're trying to push to other warehouses on us, I'm against the extension.
Thank you. Next item for possible extension or abandonment is Freeman, single family residence. We have correspondence from Langantelli Engineers dated May ninth, two thousand twenty four, site plan for Dwayne Freeman, forty nine Axsworthy Lane. Dear Chairman and Planning Board, you may recall that on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty three, the planning board granted conditional site plan approval from Mr. Freeman's application for construction of a single family residence at the above referenced property, and that on November second, two thousand twenty three, the planning board granted an extension of the conditional approval till May sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. As you may recall, we previously provided revised plans and stormwater pollution prevention plan to the town engineer for review, and at the applicant's request, put a hold on the town's review until plans for construction of the proposed house are made firm. We are also in the process of finalizing the lot line change application, which was made separately from the site plan application, and expect to have that map filed in the Orange County Clerk's office within the next month or two. As it is our understanding that the planning board conditional site plan approval is due to expire on or about May sixteen today, on behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request that the project be placed on the agenda this evening, planning board, for consideration of the granting of a hundred eighty day extension of the conditional approval. If you have any questions, I'd like myself or the applicant to attend the next meeting, or should you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Dave Higgins, engineer. Sean.
I don't have anything further.
From the board? Kelly, a hundred eighty days to take this.
November twenty first. Since your meeting night.
Could I have a motion then to extend your conditional approval to November twenty first, two thousand twenty four for this application?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by Erica, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? And lastly, for possible extension or abandonment, All One One All, D. Artagnan Foundation Regenerative Farm. Again, correspondence from Langantelli Engineers dated May ninth, two thousand twenty four. Dear Chairman, Planning Board, you may recall that on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty two, the planning board granted conditional special permit and major site plan approval for the All One One All Farm. Since the time of that approval, our office has proceeded with the application to the Orange County Department of Health for review and approval of the sewage disposal system. We expect to be completing the joint site inspection with the Health Department in the coming weeks for the required soil testing and anticipate approval of the sewage disposal system in the next few months. It is our understanding that the planning board conditional approvals due to expire on or about May seventeenth, two thousand twenty four. Therefore, on behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request that the project be placed on the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty four planning board agenda for extension of the project's conditional special permit and site plan approval to extend an additional hundred eighty days. That's it, Sean? From the board? Comments, concerns, questions? If not, could I have a motion to extend the special permit and site plan approval for an additional one hundred eighty days, which takes us to? Could I have said motion?
Motion made.
Phil, second line?
I'll second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye. Against? Thank you.
So I think neither of the first two applications are here tonight, so if you wanted to move to the third.
Okay. So we'll shuffle the agenda a little bit, item being Healy Ford, twelve dash one dash eight point one one. We have an application for site plan and site modifications associated with a customer drive through drop off of the existing automobile dealership on five point two plus or minus acres, along New York State Route seventeen M and six and a half station road in HC zone with AQ six flood plain and bonding overlay districts. And we're here tonight to consider a draft resolution for this application. Kelly.
Yes, so I prepared for you a draft resolution, which I'll go over, and then I know the applicant has a couple of questions. I wanted to draw your attention to the finding, and it's on page five in bold italics. It says, in accordance with section ninety seven fourteen D five, outdoor storage in closed buildings, the planning board finds that this site plan provides for the outdoor storage of vehicles in an orderly and attractive manner and hereby waives the requirement for additional screening. As the location of the outdoor storage of vehicles for sale is a preexisting nonconforming condition, the existing issue requires the outdoor storage of vehicles, and additional screening would prevent the necessary display of merchandise for public viewing. The planning board therefore determines to waive the restriction on outdoor storage of ten percent of the area of the lot, but limited the outdoor storage to a maximum of what is depicted on the plans approved herein. And then the planning board finds that due to the location of the existing structure, existing and proposed improvements, and the circulation of the property for employees and customers, compliance with the requirement in section ninety seven fourteen D one B regarding building placement would discourage the applicant from improving the property. The planning board also finds that compliance with the requirement in section ninety seven fourteen D six regarding the minimum distance between curb cuts and section ninety seven fourteen D three A for bike path and or sidewalk to be constructed within the landscape buffer would impose an unnecessary economic hardship on the applicant and would discourage the applicant from improving the property. Furthermore, no changes are proposed to the curb cuts at this time. As a result of the above, the applicant need not comply with the provisions of the above cited in section. And then there are seven conditions, did you want me to review those?
Before we get to those, on the list of documentation that was considered in the preparation of the resolution.
Yes.
We have correspondence that came in from the Orange County Department of Public Works on May fourteenth.
Yes, I usually don't include it there, I usually.
It's not in the narrative. On another project, you had it in the narrative.
It should be in the narrative, so let me make a note, and I will include it in the narrative of the procedural.
And then.
And there is in bold italics for a letter from Colliers that did come in, I just didn't have the date of it on.
Right.
So I'll have to look.
On item number nine A, proposed zoning board appeals decision, was that the March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four?
No, that would, it is a May decision, that was just adopted on the seventh?
Well, we have, we have that on number eleven. Do we need nine A then, or is that?
So that was a proposed decision, then there is the adopted decision from May seventh.
But we don't, we don't have a date for the proposed.
The date would, well, I don't know because it was proposed, so it was attached as an attachment, so I included it under the cover of April fourth as an attachment.
Okay.
So the final decision, though, was dated May seventh. If you recall, there was an error because the Z B A moved forward prior to this board's completing seeker. So if this board then completed seeker, they had to go back to the Z B A for the decision to be approved, and then are back to forward for this resolution.
And go through the specific conditions.
Sure. So I'm gonna go through them all, and then you can talk on them. Number one, by this resolution of approval, the planning board is not approving the propriety of any offsite uses associated with this property, including but not limited to the offsite unloading or storage of vehicles or offsite employee parking. Additionally, the loading or unloading of car carriers within the road right of way are specifically prohibited. Number two, this approval shall be subject to the zoning board appeals decision dated May seventh, twenty twenty four, and the satisfaction of all conditions contained therein. Number three, during construction, there shall be no interruption of electrical service to the adjacent parcel, i.e. section twelve block one lot eight point one two. Four, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall A, comply with the memorandum of the town engineer dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty four. B, revise the plans to include a general note identifying a number of employees. If the site is considered a public water supply in accordance with the New York State Department of Health Sanitary Code Part Five, then prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall submit to the Building Department evidence of obtaining Department of Health approval for the water supply. C, correct the typographical error in the bulk table related to the proposed building footprint, i.e. revise twenty one thousand nine forty six square feet to twenty one thousand eight square feet. D, revise the plans to show the location of the snow storage areas on the site. Number five, the applicant is required to make appropriate applications to the planning board and or building department for any modifications to site signage. Number six, all light levels must be limited to point one foot candles at the property limits, or no offsite glare will result. All new or replacement fixtures shall meet I D A lead or Green Globes criteria for nighttime friendly or dark sky lighting. Any wall pack fixtures shall include non glare full cutoff shields. And number seven, no car washing is approved by this resolution or permitted on site. And I know the applicant would like to talk to you about specific condition four B.
Yes. Good evening, Justin Diggs, Colliers, and engineer, and your design. For B, referred to, Mr. Chairman, I recall you requesting the number of employees, and they didn't have the follow up of what was required regarding the public water supply in my notes from that meeting.
Okay.
So I, I just wanted to go back for the Lincoln approval back in two thousand twenty one, we did discuss the existing well at that point, and this, this resolution item is drastically different from that one, so I just wanted to, to talk to that, to that point.
It wasn't picked up on that first one, to be all honest about it. County itself had, was not looking at all the existing businesses and operations, seeing which ones should or should not be public water systems based on the employee occupancies.
Okay.
So that's why it wasn't picked up, but the fact that you have one well.
Yes.
That's being jointly shared by both dealerships, presuming that there's twenty five people between the two that are putting in four hours shifts, it would be considered a non transient, non community water supply, much the same way as Nissan and Middletown and Johnston's on seventeen M are water systems, stamping on water systems as well, for the same reason, just because of the number of employees that are.
Yeah, understood, but I guess the, the difference here is that in what we presented on Lincoln was this well is used for portable water, they don't drink this water. Bottle, bottled water is provided for all customers, employees at these facilities.
You, you could do that, I mean, there's nothing that says you can't use the water for flushing toilets and the like and just not drinking it, but you still have to have a viable public water system, whether you choose to drink from it is discretionary.
Okay.
The only thing I would perhaps change in the wording of that comment, it's saying that prior to the signing of the plans, they shall submit evidence of obtaining Health Department approval. I would probably revise that just to prior to the signing of the plans, that they submit application, not, not seek, not get the approval, because approval could take time.
So they shall submit to the Building Department evidence of Department of Health?
That an application was submitted to the Department of Health. And then it falls back on the Department of Health to work on it, as opposed to holding your applicant hostage to the Health Department, getting it done in a timely manner.
Okay, should they provide proof of that prior to the building permit, or you don't?
Well, that, that would have nothing to do with us, that would be a town requirement at that point. I mean.
Is that something that?
You want, you want to put some time, something that puts a time element on it as far as making the application. How, what you want to tie it to is up to the Building Department and, or town engineer.
Mr. Chairman, my only concern is that if it takes a little bit longer, you know, this is not a large problem, I would expect the applicant to construct this in a couple of months. It takes a little longer with the Department of Health, it could be in a situation where everything is constructed, they're ready for the C O, but for the approval from the Department of Health on an existing well that's been used for, I don't know how long.
Well, that's fine, you'll, I'm not saying not to issue the C O.
I was just asking.
We just need something to start the process, that's all.
Yeah.
To get the application into the county, then they could track where they normally would through the Building Department to completion. Like you said, that well's been there for years and has not been subject to regulation, so they certainly wouldn't want to put that burden on them.
Thank you.
So then the, the burden would be just prior to issuing a building permit, that the application has been submitted.
Prior to signing of the plans, the applicant, the application has been submitted.
Okay.
Would you be doing the application?
Uh, most, most likely we'd be getting, well, now we'll be getting the bump, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the well of treatment, essentially, you know the routine.
Yeah, okay. And this would be subject to all the, the town specific well parameters and testing?
No, this, this condition solely relates to the, just the Department of Health approval.
Okay, okay.
And it would not be an obligation that goes to the state, state level.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other comments or concerns regarding the specific conditions?
I have one thing. It's a, it's a finding. Just with respect to the letter that we got about the sidewalks. I understand that this board has made, I think we were polled and we made a decision that they don't need sidewalks, and I'm not looking to re-engage that, but the, the letter that sort of outlines all of the significant financial hardships and, and other issues to creating a sidewalk are just basically a list of the things that you need to do to build a sidewalk. I, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that it is the most compelling argument for not building a sidewalk, and we've already made a determination on, on this applicant, I'm not looking to re-look at it, I think.
No, you did, the, I actually reminded the applicant that it was a request from this board, a board member, for them to submit a letter, so that's why the letter came in. It does deal with the financial constraints, as you said it. There was also some reminders as to the slope and the topographic changes and things like that, but I understand.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, the law is, you have to build sidewalks at these moments, and I don't know that this letter that'll be in front of us is enough to overcome our obligations under that law, and we made a decision on this, I'm not suggesting otherwise, but I wonder if we can have a more constructive way of making these determinations in the future? That's all, that's all.
Are we set for conversation?
I have a quick question, is there any, is there any car washing happening right now at the site?
Car washing?
No.
Nothing on the water, no?
No.
Is that the mouth?
That you like, you know, some detailing and prep work right before they, they get delivered.
They give three little cords to go to, either Goshen or the one in Middletown.
Any other comments or concerns? If not, could I have a motion then to approve the resolution of conditional approval of second amended major site plan for W S H Realty Corporation, Healy Core Dealership, as modified this evening?
I'll place my.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you very much.
You're all set, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Next one on the agenda. Peaceful Pause Atlantic Five Optic Corporation, eighteen dash two dash ten. An application for amended site plan for expansion of the service business on two point zero zero two plus or minus acres on Quarry Road, County Wood sixty eight. The H C District with AQ three scenic road corridor overlays. And again, tonight, we're here to consider a draft resolution. This is your project.
Yes, Sean Brady with Engineering Surveying Project.
Thank you.
Um, so I prepared for you a draft resolution for your consideration. I have no special findings to read to, um, but I will go through the specific conditions of which there are plenty. Number one, by this resolution of approval, the planning board is not approving the use of or propriety of the location of the encroachments on the lot adjoining the subject lot, i.e. property owned by County Barnes. I will say I understand that that's been removed, but I haven't actually been since. Number two, this approval shall be subject to the zoning board of appeals decision dated November twenty third, nineteen ninety nine and the satisfaction of all conditions contained therein. Number three, there shall be no deliveries of remains made to the site except by the applicant or applicant's employees. The refrigeration vehicle used for such delivery shall be emptied upon arrival at the site and no pet remains shall be stored in the vehicle. Number four, there shall be no onsite storage of remains to be cremated. Five, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide proof of receipt of all required licenses and permits to operate a pet crematorium to the building department. Number six, onsite interment of pet remains is prohibited. The applicant shall return ashes to the pet owner or dispose of ashes in accordance with all state and local regulations. Seven, the proposed parking and work areas shall be gravel as shown on the plan unless the building inspector determines the gravel surface creates unanticipated nuisance conditions, dust, ponding, excessive maintenance, et cetera. At which time, the applicant will be required to pay these parking areas to the satisfaction of the town engineer and building inspector. Eight, a lockbox shall be provided at the gate to the property to allow emergency services to unlock the gate in an event and emergency. Number nine, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall A comply with memorandum of the town engineer dated April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four. B revise the plans to resolve the discrepancy between the plan and the elevation for the proposed building addition to the satisfaction of the town engineer and building inspector. C confirm the minimum required stack height for the addition and revise the plans if necessary.
We're, we're saying confirm the minimum height, is there a maximum?
Not from the manufacturer, there would be. I don't even think that would come under your zoning code, to tell you the truth, I think there's extension, exemptions for chimney with an offset.
Okay. Comments from the board?
I just have one suggestion for Kelly and Quentin, one from the first page. There's a reference to, uh, which approval. I think it would be clear if we said which prior planning board approval.
Other comments, concerns, modifications? If not, could I have a motion then to approve the second amended resolution of conditional approval of major site plan for peaceful pause, uh, as modified this evening?
I'll place my.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Uh, Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? You're all done, good job.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is seventeen M Flex Building, twelve dash two dash forty three. Application for a site plan and special permit approval for warehouse and office on eight point nine plus or minus acres along New York State Route seventeen M and Cannon Hill Drive and i.e. I Zone AQ three flood plain and Pine Brook Street corridor and water supply watershed overlays. And we're here this evening to consider a part three E A F and a draft negative declaration.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
How are you?
Introduce yourself.
Yes, uh, as just to bring the board up to speed, we, you know, we were obviously in front of the zoning board before variances. They did a, a straw vote, uh, poll, uh, for the variances and it's subject to, uh, a negative declaration with this board, so we did prepare the part three. I reviewed the, uh, the draft. I, I only have one comment that I would like to include in it and had to do with the, uh, the well. I had a lot with the Healy application, uh, we will be drilling a new well and we will be required to go to the Orange County Health Department and do our, our pump testing and quality testing with them. So I would like to include or amend that portion where it, it actually indicates, uh, the well test to the satisfaction of the town's hydrogeologist to include it or, and or the Orange, or, or the Orange County Health Department because we will be actually making an application to them for, uh, you know, this transient water supply, much like that last application you saw about.
Non-transient.
Non-transient, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on that.
Sure.
The negative declaration looks at the impact on groundwater. Uh, the Department of Health test, uh, indicates whether the applicant has enough water supply at their own parcel. So I would say that that would be acceptable if the applicant was to submit a monitoring program for the town's review. Uh, and they can do that monitoring at the same time as doing a Department of Health test. But we just want to make sure there's no impact on other groundwater resources.
That's correct, so the county does not look at that.
I'm eleven.
Okay, that, that's all.
Open that language.
So what do we have first coming?
Just want to get some notes so that when I email Sean and say why. Um, well, I prepared for this board a draft negative declaration. This was based upon a part three that was provided and a review that the planning board had done previously.
I have a couple of comments on the part three.
Oh, go for that.
I mean, some of them.
That's where it starts, I thought you meant over the next section.
Section two. I guess it's section one, I'm sorry. Uh, on impacts on land, uh, saying that the permit will require weekly onsite inspections to monitor the site. Weekly onsite inspections by who?
Uh, that would be the, uh, qualified inspector.
Yes, qualified inspector.
Three K was just a spelling issue. Soil's testing, soil is spelled wrong. Uh, the paragons under the boat.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, on item ten, we're referring to, we're saying a Chris has been completed, we should spell out what a Chris is. And number thirteen, impacts on transportation. The sentence says consequently, no significant increase to existing traffic patterns are expected. I think it should say in the, uh, as an opinionist, based on, you know, the applicant or the applicant's consultants believe that there would not be any significant increase. Rather than making a definitive statement.
But that's, your, your name.
I'm talking to you, but it's for Joe, yeah.
The negative declaration draft that I did pass that by John Canning and one of the things he suggested was this language. But it does say that you're acknowledging, based on the fact that the increase in traffic will be modest.
And then, uh, going a little further on impacts on noise and odor. There's a blank, it says there's no residences within blank distance of the project site. Is there something filled in there?
She, yes.
Very last sentence.
Yep, yep.
And lastly, number eighteen, impact on human health. That's actually, I believe, section sixteen in part two, not eighteen. That's it for you, Joe.
Right.
Which brings us to you, Kelly.
Okay, um, so I prepared for you a draft negative declaration. As I said, I did run this past, uh, your traffic consultant as well, uh, specifically for those traffic concerns. Um, just so that it's clear what this language said, um, I wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly so I could explain it to you. That the project requires the applicant to apply to the D O T to see if a left turn lane is required. And if so, then they have to construct it and if not, then there's no effect. Um, so that's what that language says. I don't know if anybody has any questions or revisions to the traffic.
I do have left traffic, not the section.
Okay.
As to groundwater. We're assuming that the applicant passes the well test. And so it's not clear to me if they don't pass it, what happens then?
When you say pass it.
Well, there's an assumption that the water will be potable and not otherwise useful for the intended purposes.
So the applicant is going to be considered, um, public water supply. Uh, they need a permit from the Department of Health that requires pumping it, test pumping rate as well as doing, uh, sampling. If they don't pass that, they don't get the Department of Health approval.
Okay.
So then it doesn't go anywhere, stops.
And then.
And basically they would have to come back to you for a use that they would be able to provide whatever water they can.
Whenever they can, the, the negative deck wouldn't go away, it would just.
It would basically need to be revised, like if you needed to, if you did an E I S and then you supplement it, it was basically like that, they would come back. If you revise, they would need to address that supplemental. That's part of the reason I put, I'm assuming satisfactory results.
I know.
Just in case. No, I think it's, I think it's a very good point because that, that is what the board is doing, saying you're doing this test, but we're assuming it's coming out as right, well. Did anybody have any others?
I just, if I could get a clarification on the impact on transportation. I mean, halfway through the paragraph, it says the planning board has been made aware that a left turn lane is currently warranted at the intersection of Cannon Hill and seventeen M. And, uh, that, and that, that intersection has experienced a higher than average accident rate. So the applicant has to apply to the D O T for the necessity to put in a turning lane?
According to John Canning, and Sean can probably explain this better, but according to John Canning, it's to see if a left turn lane is needed, if they want one to be installed based on this project.
So why, why, why does it say the planning board has been made aware that a left turn lane is warranted at the intersection?
Because you have been, uh, in connection with the, uh, ready mixed concrete application. This intersection was studied, uh, and it had a high accident, higher than average accident rate. And it did need to be warned for a left turn lane. However, there was nobody that was moving forward that would, would do that. Now, this applicant's before you, they're adding thirty eight and thirty three trips in the P G L. Um, but again, this, we, you as a board ran into this situation somewhat with Jewish hospitality when you considered their funding statement and that was, well, what happens if the D O T says that they don't want to put one in or maybe they have a plan for four years down the road? You know, the, the applicant doesn't want to get trapped in the, in the negative debt, having to do something that may be out of their control. So that, but that is why I think John structured this language in that manner.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Neil, yes?
Just during one of the E R B meetings, uh, the town supervisor happened to be there and this, uh, project was being discussed and, uh, at that point in time, there's some, uh, great deal of concern about the intersection, but the, the town supervisor also indicated possibly the talent, uh, contributed or possibly contributed to help out with making this intersection better. And even suggested, and I'll say this and we can vote, even suggested to the board where perhaps it would even make sense to relieve the applicant of the requirement for this sidewalk along seventeen M and use that money instead for the, in addition for the, uh, improvements at the intersection. So I think it may be beneficial for somebody to have a conversation with the town board or the town supervisor at least.
Does somebody sitting here in the first row?
I think so. Okay, I just wanted to say, thank you.
That's you, Joe. Okay, well, I'll, I'll, the one thing I will say with the zoning board, it sounded like they were not going to grant the variance for, it wasn't a sidewalk, but the way the code speaks, which is bicycle pass slash walk, you know, it was, it's generic. And they were going to leave what to be done, they weren't going to give us the variance to not put something in, but they were going to leave it up to this board to determine what it would be. So that maybe when we come back, I'm not really, I'm not prepared to speak about that tonight, but when we come back to the planning bag over, over the zoning board, maybe we can.
You might have more direction from them.
Use that.
Discuss with this, we'll see what.
So instead of putting the sidewalk in, maybe we'll put in, uh, you know, walk, you know, something else, you know, they had mentioned, uh, you know, some type of an earth and path because we do have a berm along that hole.
We don't want to lose the berm.
Right.
We might get to the berm for a sidewalk.
Yeah, they'll have to be pretty descriptive because you don't have the ability to really weigh what they're like that in our sidewalk unless the, like you did with Healy, uh, so that's why they are before the C D A for that. So I think the C D A needs to be pretty descriptive in whatever they want you to consider if they're not granting a bearing. I'm not sure how that's going to work, so we'll have to see what they come out with. So if the board has no further comments or no further questions, um, we can adopt the negative declaration.
Okay.
With a motion.
Could I have said motion to adopt the negative declaration as prepared?
I'll make that motion.
Phil, second by? Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you, and then just one more thing, I, I want to do, one of the variances that, that, that the zoning board was considering was, if you recall, our initial plan had two entrances into the, into the site. Uh, and then we, uh, from this board had requested an alternate, uh, plan where we had a single entrance. Uh, when we straw polled the zoning board on that, it sounded like they, you know, they didn't formally vote, but it sounded that they were feeling to be okay with giving us the two entrances, but on the premise that the planning board was going to make the final decision on whether or not it would be a single or a, as, or a double entrance, because we had initial meetings where you, this board had discussed that, whether or not it should be a single or a double. And we'd like to get some guidance on that because that, that's critical for us to finish up our design when we come back here to the planning board. So I don't know if you're prepared to.
Not going to happen tonight, Mr. Chairman.
And we don't really know what they're looking, what they're looking to do, so I think maybe when we get the decision, we'll be able to give that.
Typically applicants come before the board with their preferred plan and things do change in the course of review. Uh, you, you've, you've offered an alternative plan and I think the applicant, I think the board, uh, asked for John Canning's input, but this hasn't come back to you, you know, you're in the secret phase, but when it does come back to you, they'll get a comment from the traffic consultant about it.
Okay, is that something we can submit to the traffic consultant?
No.
Port your shot.
Jim.
Jim.
Do you want to? That's the D A.
The D A, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Do you have one for Owens and then you can move on to the other one?
Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is Owens Road Solar, ten dash one dash ten point two-two, an application for a subdivision, site plan, special permit for a solar energy system on one hundred twenty-six point three, plus or minus acres along Owens Road in RU Zone, AQ six, AQ three, scenic road corridor, floodplain, ponding stream corridor, and water supply, watershed overlays. And we're here to discuss possible modification to the approval. Kelly?
John?
John?
Good evening. Johnny heard from Couch White for the applicant. So yes, we are here to ask the board to consider a modification to condition number five. It is my understanding that the project developer, New Leaf Energy, requested a condition modification. However, my RAS here is a little different. I understand that New Leaf wanted to entirely change the condition. However, my clients came in and purchased the projects from New Leaf, and we had a bit of a snafu, you could say, during our tree clearing. As Sean so kindly pointed out, on our approved plan set, if you could look at the tree clearing set, the tree clearing is not identified on the wetland mitigation area. So unfortunately, the trees in the wetland mitigation area did not come down. And the reason for us that that is problematic is, we have a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, which because of the bats, we have to follow the clearing window. So at this point, we cannot move forward whatsoever because of condition number five and the fact that the trees did not get cleared in the wetland mitigation area. So our request would be, if the board is so inclined, is to modify the condition so it applies to site two, but not site one. If you look at the plans, all of the wetland impacts are, and the basis for the mitigation area are for project number two. As I kind of put in the letter, I don't want to rehash too much of that, but essentially, it's two projects. We got the subdivision, that plan has been filed. Per Frank, we're going to need two different building permits, so our, our goal would be to treat them as two distinct projects. So that condition would apply to project number two, so we could pull the building permit for project number one and construct that, and then we could pull the building permit, permit for project number two, once we get those trees down and get that wetland mitigation area constructed.
Just so the board knows, specific condition number five that John referred to says prioritization of the building permit, they can self-construct the wetland mitigation areas on-site to the satisfaction of the building inspector and Army Corps of Engineers if necessary.
One thing I was considering, again, just a thought, for a modification, that the CFO for lot one would be held back until after a permit is pulled for lot two and the trees are cut. Lot one would get the building permit, they could proceed with it, but they couldn't get a CFO there in isolation, so we don't end up with lot two that has all the trees that were stripped out and not ever built on as a possibility. Once, once the building permit's pulled for lot two, and the trees could be cut, then the CFO could be issued for lot one. That sounds reasonable enough.
Sounds reasonable to me. Frank, you have any?
No, I'm listening, and I'm open to all these ideas. I have no, no issue here.
Then, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be prioritization of the building permit for lot two, and the certificate of, and the issuing of the certificate of occupancy for lot one, the applicant shall construct the wetland mitigation area on-site to the satisfaction of the building inspector and Army Corps of Engineers if necessary. That means they can get the building permit for number one and keep going.
They can keep going with that project, then when they get to that window after November first, where they can cut those remaining twenty-five trees or whatever it was...
Cut the trees, install the wetlands.
Then they can cut the trees, get the wetland things going, get the permit for lot two at that time. And then, once that's done, then they can go back and get CFO of lot one.
Except...
I have now a problem with it, Frank.
How does the board feel?
Why are the trees not cut?
So it was not identified on our tree clearing plan, so I think, I think it's sheet C two, C two point zero. If you look, unfortunately, when the tree clearing was identified on the plan, it was missed in that area, and frankly, that's the only reason. It was an oversight.
Has the applicant considered doing an acoustic study to verify there's no bats and getting a...
Before the pandemic, I know I received an email from DBC and another community where they were no longer accepting that as proof positive that there was no habitat outside. I don't know what their position is currently, but that might, that might be much part for this applicant, much longer time, if he's still even accepted.
I, I think that it's accepted, because I know in my, my work, we do it, if absolutely necessary, but just a consideration.
Now, it always could be had if they wanted to.
Yeah, and then we'd also have to go back to the Army Corps, and I think by the time we go through the Army Corps, we'd be beyond November. Yeah.
So who's the new owner? The firm is Generate Capital.
So if the board is amenable to this revision, I just need to know if there would be a finding, if this would be an amended application, if it's treated as such, you'll have a second amended resolution, so you can authorize the drafting of a resolution. And one of the things would be that you determine that the amendment proposed was consistent with the terms of the special permit approval, and did not represent a substantial change from the approved plan, determining that no public hearing is necessary.
Can we lump that all in one?
Absolutely.
Could I have a motion?
No issues.
Phil, second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye. Against?
Okay, so then we'll have a draft resolution for your next, I was trying to make the change tonight, but you're going to want to see it first, I mean, so.
Thanks, Abby.
Have a good night, Joe.
You too.
To the top. Item two, I did speak with Mr. Corn, he reviewed the resolution, and he said that you can move forward taking action on it in his house.
And the first one?
I don't know where they are, I have not had any communications with them.
Not here, I don't know what position that I found.
We can try and move it to the next meeting and see if they should...
Did they, shall they have it come back? The way he walked out of here, he was happy, thinking he had it.
I thought we said we'll see you in two weeks or something like that.
I mean, I don't think anything in here is crazy, but he doesn't know about the excavation for us, so I don't know. You might want either, I just don't want to have him be like, oh, wait, I have a question, and then you automatically have to do an amended resolution. He should be provided with this, and then try and have him at the next meeting.
Just a procedural question. If we approve the resolution tonight, and there's a request for a change, is it that much more difficult to just do an amended resolution?
Well, it would be an amended resolution. The board probably wants to cease the changes.
But even if we have the meeting, the meeting next time, and talk about that, if we amend it at that point in time, we're going to have, I don't think, he loses anything.
He's not losing anything.
He's not losing anything.
Unless he contests, you know, he's right back where he started every week.
Right, but he's not going to waste any more than if we change it next meeting anyhow. So I'm just thinking, if we, if we're agreeable to passing it tonight, the man's not losing anything.
It's up to the board. You generally try not to take action when somebody's not present, but like I said, this one is pretty minor, and he did walk out of here really positive. So I'm not sure, it's, again, I would go to you.
All the board.
I think we can go ahead, I do have a question. Is this, is this the whole creamery?
Yes.
Yes.
Kelly, on the resolution of approval, we're referring, I think we picked up something earlier.
Oh, yes. That's B and B pool, that's wrong.
It also refers to spa center?
Yep.
And a conditional site plan approval? It just should refer to Stephen White.
The top one.
Stephen White.
Yeah, that was a typo, and I didn't want to send out an additional.
But otherwise, I think we should proceed? It should be controversial.
I say, will you go ahead, please? Let him have a pool.
Sorry, there was one thing, though. It was described as an in-ground pool, but it's above ground.
It's above ground. Because you said it was four feet above, that's why we were questioning whether or not we needed a fence, because it met building code of being four feet. That's what Diana mentioned, as far as somebody coming in from the back property, coming over, that maybe there should be a fence as well.
I don't know if you can get it in the ground there, I think it's all rock. Because if you remember the man that came to us years and years and years ago and wanted that shell, Columbia or somebody to go through it. I don't think you can get that.
I understood it to be an above-ground.
It is. So above-ground.
It's an above-ground pool.
And then the access would be from the deck, which would have its own fence around the deck, you know, the access to meet the code.
I just really wanted to have an in-ground. Oh, well, practice drawing, I wrote it in.
It's in an above-ground pool.
It's a very oddly shaped above-ground. But either way, I'll change in-ground to above-ground. I would just ask that, if you act on this tonight, if the building department could reach out to him, just let him know, and we can provide him with a final draft of it once I finish it.
Now, I have a question. In that development, I think the one next one, I'm not sure about this one, it couldn't have above-ground pools. Wasn't it in the, the original plot of subdivision?
Orange State had prohibition against pools, I believe.
So did Meadows?
Yeah, Meadows did.
You still don't know that you had that?
Is that all Goshen? Does this one have it too on the overground? No?
This is A and L.
This is A and L, let me just check.
None of these places had, are you sure that this is going to be filed?
As long as it's not in the conservation easement, it should be fine.
And it isn't.
Question. Right on the top, we're saying minor site plan for Stephen White. Should it indicate the address, thirty-one Creamery Circle there as well? We have the section blocking lot in the narrative below it.
I'll put it under.
Or located on thirty-one Creamery Circle or something like that?
I'll put it under.
Stephen White, it sounds like a road, that's already his name.
Yeah. His name could be Candy Candy.
But it's not. Other comments from the board? Okay. We need a motion to...
Motion to...
Waive the public hearing.
So what I left in bold italics was this board determining that it is a type-two action, and also waiving the public hearing. The application was referred to the ERB and the Orange County Planning Department. We didn't get the two thirty-nine back? We didn't get the two thirty-nine back, so it's up or not.
I swear, can't read that.
But if you'd like, you can declare this to be a type-two action, and you can determine whether or not there's a public hearing required, and you can review the two findings.
That second old sentence says, "As this project is an application for a minor site plan, no public hearing was required on May sixteen..." Okay, so today, we waived it. Okay, got it.
So I would ask if the board wants to make a motion to declare this as a type-two action.
Could I have said motion? Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Jeremy, all in favor, say aye. Against? Okay, second, I...
If the board would like to waive the public hearing.
Who'd like to make that motion?
Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy, second by.
I'll second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye. Against?
And then I included two findings, that, the first is your scenic road corridor overlay finding, and the second is the planning board has determined that to the extent that the elements of the site plan application are lacking those contained in section ninety-seven seventy-five B, the planning board hereby deems that they are not necessary and are hereby waived, except as noted in conditions below. Does the board want to make a motion adopting those findings?
I'll make the motion.
Phil, second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye. Against?
So I'll send you an updated resolution for next one.
I will.
Thanks.
And the next one, I did speak with...
So what were we missing on this?
The two thirty-nine. Because you're waiving the public hearing, you have to go to the county and to the ERB. The ERB came back before tonight, so you have to be ready to do that. And thirty days have been passed. I'm sure. I did speak with Mr. Corn for the next one.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Twenty-six, thirty-nine, seventeen M Building, nine twenty Associates LLC, twelve dash one dash fifty-four. It's an application for a site plan and service business on point-six-five plus or minus acres, along New York State Route seventeen M, in an HCE district, and AQ three overlay. And again, we have a draft resolution to consider this evening.
So I provided to you a draft redline resolution, which identified the, I understand that in my absence, you requested the square footage, the specific square footage of the building included, so I put that in the application summary, updated a couple of the plans, and inserted the...
We've got to add the Orange County DPW along the planning department on that page. We've got that one in.
No, they just submitted a bunch.
Bay Fourteenth.
Yeah, they, oh, they did like a DPW letter dump to pretty much every municipality on that day.
They will cover copies of each other, too.
And so I'll include that, and I include the finding on the minimum curb cut, that it is legally pre-existing, non-conforming, and no variance is necessary. And then all the conditions remain the same.
One other item?
Yes.
On the identification of plans?
Yes.
We have last revised eleven-three-twenty-three, but the revised plans that went to ZVA are dated two-two-twenty-four.
I have no idea. The, what the applicant had done was, when you had authorized the preparation or resolution, they had then gone ahead and submitted revised plans. The resolution, if you could talk about the ZLS meeting, was based on the plans that you had reviewed, rather than the revised plan. I don't know what they did, but you get it.
So what ends up happening for you, which is that however their variances are and are granted, they're granting them, I was there for that, I actually wrote their decision. So I know what their variances are for. They're going to need to submit a revised plan that complies with these conditions, and that last revised date is likely going to be updated anyway, so they probably complied with some of these on those updated plans, but they didn't come to you, so I didn't include any revised plan.
Okay. So to come back to us, let's turn around. Other comments, concerns from the board? In that case, could I have a motion then, to approve the resolution of conditional approval major site plan for nine twenty Associates LLC, otherwise, AKA Mike Corn, Corn, I'm sorry?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye. Against? You could tell, he's even though he stayed home, he's still got it.
Yeah, he couldn't make it, and he, he actually first asked to be pushed to June, and I said that that was fine, and he said, wait a minute, I reviewed it, and I have no problem, exactly, I can't make it. So, okay, fine.
Before we pass this on to Sean, are there any other comments or concerns from the board? Sean, where are yours?
So you have the two resolutions that were discussed tonight, Owens Solar and, I'm sorry, thirty-one Creamery, also because of the two thirty-nine. Uh, then you have a public hearing for S R ninety-four Solar, uh, that's the one out on ninety-four. You also have a public hearing for Hughes, and I do have a question for the board about the location for the public hearing, if you think that you should try to remedy, or maybe try to, if you deserve something.
Was the notice already published?
I don't know.
No? Okay.
For Hughes.
For both, yeah.
Well.
Because it incorporates, uh, the town board's, and they have their public hearing on the local law that evening as well, because all the comments may be related.
What does the board think?
I think, I think, um, this will likely be sufficient, moving on.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a full run here, but things like here might work, I guess.
I think it's going to be full.
It's going to be, it's going to be packed.
I think we should go to the.
Maybe.
I'm thinking.
I, given the fact that I've seen.
A lot of red signs.
Signs of laws, I would think it's got a lot of attention, so I, I think the nine-one-one center might.
Yeah.
Might be better.
Great, great.
Just to try to get that.
See what we can do.
Yeah, it's always an adventure there, not just getting it, but we've had.
Parking issues?
Well, parking and also, uh, audio equipment sometimes isn't anywhere to be found, so.
Parking is fine, I did count parking spots one by one myself, and there is sufficient parking, and yes, I did do that, because I have a section break.
I think almost.
The morgue's completed?
Yeah, but I still think that there's some restrictions on parking right now.
Yeah. So we'll see what we can do, we'll keep the board, um, posted, and also the, the public, it will be notified properly in the paper, as well as on the website.
And I'm sure it'll be in the India as well.
Yes.
Well, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Please motion.
Diana, second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Sean, have a good night.